They thought you were on vacation. That's what it was.
I had a picture of her. And there was this girl that January, she tucked in April. The March band, I almost took a picture and sent it to you, but I was like, she may think I'm checking around at this event. I shouldn't do that. Yeah, but it was pretty cool. Did you get to eat at your seafood place? Did you get to go to your seafood place in Fort Lauderdale? Did you? You were going to. What? You were talking about, I didn't know that.
Call the meeting to order. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for the stay in the city in which we live. Guide us this evening to make our decisions.
Amen.
This is the regular meeting of the Noonan City Council, August 27th, 2019. I have the reading of the minutes from the regular meeting of August 13th, 2019 before y'all entertain a motion.
Salute. Volume.
Sorry. Here we go. Try, is this better? Outside, better? Okay.
There's one correction I think we need to make. One vote was transcribed as six zero. I believe it should have been seven zero for all votes that night.
Okay, which vote is that, Mr. Kretko?
Let's see, it was the one regarding the scope and fees for task order number one, preliminary engineering phase one, scoping for the lower Fayetteville Road Operations and Safety Project.
Okay, so is a motion to, as amended?
As amended.
All right. Motion is second. Who made the motion?
Ray.
Will you withdraw your motion? Okay, thank you. Motion is amended.
Motion is amended, please.
And a second. As amended. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening, there are two appointments to the Cultural Arts Commission. The first one is Mr. DeBeau's.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Jamie Rutledge, please.
Second. Motion is second, we nominate Jamie Rutledge to serve term on the Cultural Arts Commission. Any discussion? All those in favor? Posed, motion carried.
I'd ask city manager to write John Thrasher, and thank him for his many years of service and leadership on that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. DeBeau's. The next, the Cultural Arts Commission is Ms. Jenkins.
I will need that put on the next agenda.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schell on the Keeping It Beautiful.
Would you put it on the next agenda, please?
Thank you. Mr. DeBeau's on Keeping It Beautiful.
Next agenda, please.
Thank you. Mr. Kretko on Cultural Arts Commission.
For both of mine, I'd like to ask that it be placed on the next agenda as well. And also if we could send both Ms. Kim Wright and Mr. Dave Darrell, thank you notes as well for their years of service.
Okay, thank you. Tonight, we have someone from the Christmas Commission. I think Ms. Norma is here for suggestions upcoming holiday season. You've been hanging around me a while, you should have known that by now. Ms. Norma, how are you?
I'm fine. Norma Haines, and I'm chairman of the Christmas Commission. And first of all, I want to thank you as councilman and mayor for the support that you have given us through the years that we've done this because we really think our town has looked so wonderful. And because of you and your generosity, we are so grateful. And we want to thank Paige. Paige is back there, Paige Beckwith, she has done an outstanding job of helping us to get quotes and to walk around town and look at things. And she's just done, she's given us a lot of time, and we're grateful. Now, I won't take up much of your time, but having all the trees lit up on the weekends has made our town so festive. And I believe it has helped make it more inviting to all the crowds who come to downtown on the weekends. Sadly, we're going to have to say goodbye to the lighted trees. We had begun to notice that some of the trees were not lighted. I think you have a report, and we ask our facilities maintenance people to check this out for us. It's disturbing to learn that currently fourteen trees of the thirty-one do not work properly. They offered some suggestions for repairs, but we just feel like this is just a patchwork, that this will continue to be an issue with the current materials in use. So therefore, the commission has spent time and investigation into just what would be best for the town. Our proposal to you is that we remove the existing lights and any staples or materials that currently hold them. The best quote that we can get on this is eighty-five dollars an hour with an estimated total of eighty hours for a total of sixty-eight hundred dollars. The commission would like to restring at least eight trees around the square at the cost of thirteen hundred and ninety-nine dollars a tree. Now, we have looked into this extremely well. And the manufacturer that we have chosen to do this warrants these new lights for two full years of year-round usage. The estimated cost for product and labor to reinstall at least the eight trees is eleven thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. The contractor that the commission recommends using is Illuminating Design. They provide the lighting for the Atlanta Botanical Gardens, among other places. They string the lights without having to staple or stick any items in the tree. We tried so hard this year to stay within our budget. We did, we were able to do that last year. However, sometimes situations do come up that are beyond any of our control. And we want our town to look its best year-round and especially at Christmas. We looked into trying to repair these lights, but we felt under all the circumstances that we would just be doing one repair after the other, which would cost more in the long run. The lights we are suggesting have watertight gaskets surrounding the plugs and do not have bulbs that need to be changed. After much consideration and studying of all kinds of lights, we feel that this is our very best solution. We just felt that the trees were so important to our downtown that I am filling you in on this first, and the urgency we feel is there in this regard. And along with the trees for the Christmas season, we plan to purchase garland with attached lights for sixteen of the posts around the courthouse, the light posts, which will certainly be a beautiful addition. This is a cost of one thousand, five hundred and forty dollars and sixty cents. Then we would like to purchase sixteen bows to go at the tops of the garlands for a thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. Make necessary repairs to the sleigh that hosts Santa every year and sits by the tree. The wood sleigh skis need to be replaced at the estimated cost of not more than a thousand dollars. And we want, need to replace ornaments for the downtown panel Christmas tree at a cost estimate of eight hundred dollars. And we will continue, we want to continue to decorate the city parks and buildings as in the past with a cost estimate of a thousand, seventy-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Now, we know that the total of all the above items is twenty-three thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents, which is thirteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents of our budget. We hope that as years go by, we can put lights back on all thirty-one trees. But we are only asking this year for the eight trees at this time. Thank you so much again for your continued support of the Christmas Commission, and especially for helping to make our town look so beautiful. I appreciate it.
Ms. Norma, we appreciate your help and the rest of the committee, and of course Paige with her help on staff in order to get all this done. It's a hard job to put it all together, and we appreciate what you've done here. Any, are there any questions from the council of Ms. Norma before she steps away? We make a decision on this?
The eight trees that you're talking about, are those ones actually on the square itself?
Yes.
Yes. We walked around and decided where they would be the most effective. Now, they're not within the courts square area, but they are around the courthouse.
Right.
And this would be removing all thirty-one existing lights?
And we need to, because it doesn't look right to have a few lit up and a few not lit. You know, it just doesn't look good.
Okay, is there a motion on the issue?
Make a motion, we approve that.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the issue, the request as presented. All those in favor? Posed, motion carried, thank you, Ms. Norma, we appreciate that.
Thank y'all so much.
Will you bring us an item in our next agenda, Mr. Phillips, to amend their budget? Thank you. I appreciate that very much. Next is the annual report from the Noonan Cultural Arts Commission. Ms. Kerry, how are you?
Good evening. I'm Phyllis Graham. Good evening, council, and thank you all for your support of the Noonan Cultural Arts Commission. And I'd like to recognize Yvette behind me because she is an integral part of our commission. And she is responsible for bringing jazz in the park in the spring and the fall, which we have one coming up real soon. So I won't take a lot of time this evening, but I would like to just review what has gone on this year in 2019. We have vacancies right now in our commission, which you already heard one new member be introduced. And we also are hoping to have a retreat so we can really get just really on the same page with all of our activities. We do start off the year, which I think is really important. Oh, here's, thank you, Hasko.
You're welcome.
There's the list of our current members. And Margaret has joined us, and let's, and then we have the other vacancies. So you can read those names, I don't need to go over them. But I appreciate the support that the commission members give to us as a commission. But we start off the year, which I think is really important, and it kind of goes along with what Ms. Norma says with our downtown. We usually put up the air Sister City banners to help celebrate the Robert Burns Weekend, which is at the end of January. And we kind of are trying to coordinate more of the Sister City celebration, which for some of you, if you don't know, we have a sister city in Scotland. And it, if, there's lots of great information at the Carnegie if you want to find out more about that. So that was kicked off this year with a concert at the Wadsworth. And I think there was some Scottish dancing, et cetera. The next event, which is always a wonderful event, which is part of the whole reason the Culture Arts Commission exists, is the Friends of Wadsworth Concert. That's the annual event with Becky Budd being the main artistic director. And it's always a great event. We had actually a weekend this year, and we wanted to incorporate to the Wadsworth Alley. We had a reception in the auditorium rather than the Wadsworth Alley because of weather. And that was kind of fun to see the Wadsworth lobby set up as a reception area. And it was very successful and well-attended. The, the next event we had was the Master Works Class, which involves high school students that get instructions from Courtney Budd and some of the artists. And that's always just really refreshing to see young people who have to, you know, get critiqued and stand up in front of a big audience, too. Let's see, this year, well, I'll go back to that later, I'll finish this year. So the Wadsworth concert this year, we actually had a young people's concert on Sunday, which was fantastic. Lots of young people, grandparents, parents, and lots of interaction with instruments and hands-on with the artists. So that was extremely successful. So we hope to actually make that a bigger event this year in 2020 coming up. This was part of the group photo that we took, and we also had Indra Thomas join us from Atlanta, which she's just a great addition and has a lot of spunk and great workability with young people. So that, that's really kind of wraps up the Wadsworth Weekend for this 2019. And then our next event was Jazz in the Park. And that, well, they've just been very well-attended, and we've been very lucky with weather. We've upgraded some sound equipment and also some lighting, so it's going to keep getting better and better as time goes on. This past, just last month, a few weeks ago, first part of August, we had Romeo and Juliet for two nights in Greenville Park, fantastic. They are a great addition to the culture arts partnership. These are a couple of Noonan folks that graduated from Noonan High School. They are a professional acting company. And I think bringing Shakespeare to the park is just a wonderful treat that a lot of communities don't have that opportunity. And I love the name Noonan Shakes. So look for that next year as well. So we have coming up, as I already mentioned, Jazz in the Park will be the same night as the Art Walk, which will be September 20th. So you can come to the Art Walk around the square and then go on down to the Jazz in the Park. This year, we're going to add Dracula, which is a Southern arc dance group production, dance theater. Fantastic, I think it has some original music. Last year Doug Keyes was involved in that, and this year there's another composer that has done original music. Two nights, you can see up there. So put that on your calendar. And then we always end up the year with the Nutcracker, which, as an annual tradition, again, at our wonderful Wadsworth. I'd like to thank Katie Mosley because she has really been so instrumental in working with us. And she is part of Leisure Services, she has an office over at the Wadsworth. And they're just very busy running out our parks and the Howard Warner Building. So there's just lots of great things going on and opportunities for people to get involved and to attend cultural events. This is our proposed schedule for 2020. And we will be having again a Burns Weekend Sister City event in January. Let's see if there's anything else. Hopefully next October, we'll have Sounds of the Silence, which is a fun thing that we do with organ music and black and white silent movies, which is really interesting for young people to participate in that because it's totally, you know, they're not on their devices. They're actually having to watch something and listen, so I think that's a great thing. So we'll be presenting our, requesting our budget for this next year. And we just have a lot of opportunities to continue to use the wonderful Wadsworth, also our parks. And I, we had added that collaborative event with the University of West Georgia, which that's just a great partnership to continue to develop. I will say that for 2020, the Friends of Wadsworth Concert will be Saturday night on March 14th. And we're also hoping on Sunday afternoon to do a family concert at the Noonan Center, which would be just in an amphitheater setting so people could bike in on the link and they could bring their picnic blankets. And I think that would just be a great fun event. We're also bookending that week with the Wadsworth with piano competition that we're not sponsoring, but it's part of that whole week event. So you can read that, and I won't take any more of your time. But thank you so much for your support, the councilman. Thank you for your support, and thank you for helping us attain new members and just keep the activities going in the spirit of the Culture Arts Commission. Thank you so much.
Ms. Graham, we appreciate your service and the service of the other members of the Cultural Arts Commission. Just another great commission in the city, along with the Christmas Committee that makes Noonan a great place to live with all the events. We appreciate it very much. Thank you. Okay, no action necessary there. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything this evening?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, under my report this evening, we have the swearing-in of the Noonan Youth Council students. So I'm going to ask the Noonan, I'm going to talk as loud as I possibly can without a mic. Mayor Protem Cynthia Jenkins was instrumental many years ago. I'm not going to say how many because I don't know. Ten? Ten years ago. So this is the 10th anniversary class of the Noonan Youth Commission. They are high school students from around the county. And they are, they serve the city as one of those commissions that I just talked about, like the Christmas Commission and the Noonan Cultural Arts Commission. And they learned about the government. And what better meeting to be at than this one? Talking about the government in action. They are, they will actually retire, if you'll, Mike, if you'll bring them on hand, please. They will actually retire from this meeting because of the lack of seating and go upstairs to our conference room where there's another TV where this is streaming live and finish watching the meeting up there. So all, every year, Mayor Protem Jenkins and I tag-team on this. She calls out the names of the individuals. And we actually have some members of the And we actually have some members of the Noonan Youth Commission who have gone off, graduated from college, moved back to Noonan because it's a great place to live, right? And now they are members of the adult council.
That's right.
Adult commission to oversee the youth council. So it's pretty cool to see them come back and do that. So Mayor Protem.
All right. Well, we're going to get started here. We have the oath of office. What's going to happen is they're going to be given their certificates. We're going to call out their names, and then our city attorney is going to swear them in. So the first student that we all recognize is Michaela Franklin.
Are we in an apothecal order? That makes it really.
Preston Fulmer. Caleb Griffiths. Jackson Grove.
No, we're not in our group.
No, we're not.
No, we're not.
Jaden Hammett.
Jackson. Mayor Protem, would you come to the center here?
Sure.
There we go.
We have Rachel Henson. Rachel Henson. Lauren Van den Hoogel. Bill Moody.
Bill.
Jack Palmer. Leah Rose. Manny Smith. And Hella Horn.
And I have to say, every one of these students has a great handshake. That's important.
It is.
If you don't, do not. So, Mr. Seers, if you'll raise your right hand and then repeat your name. Aye. Repeat your name.
Say it.
They follow directions well. The South Square that I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution of the United States of America and the laws thereof, that I will support, uphold, and defend the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia, not inconsistent therewith, that I will observe and obey the laws and ordinances of the city of Noonan, Georgia, that I will faithfully perform and discharge the duties, become and fund me as a member of the Noonan Youth Council fairly and honestly to best my skill and ability. So help me God, will say I do?
Amen.
All right. Mayor and council members, I present to you and the public the newest group of the 2019, 2020 Noonan Youth Council. (APPLAUSE). Okay, the next item on the agenda this evening under new business is requests from Noonan Utilities to harvest timber on approximately 300 acres of forest land held by the city of Noonan. Is there a motion to approve the request?
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next is a considered request for proposals for engineering architectural services related to the city's 2020 Community Development Block Grant application.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to just ask that we can, and this is up to y'all, whether we can put this off for a bit. I have a few more questions. And I'm on that committee with Mr. DeBose and Mr. Gill. And I'd just like a little time to talk to them and to our staff to get a little bit more understanding before we move forward, if that's not a problem.
Okay. Would you possibly give us a date to move forward, to put it back on the agenda?
The next one, I just, I just want a little bit more time to be able to talk among ourselves about that for a second.
So the first meeting is September?
Sure.
Is that what you're, if you're making that motion?
I can make that motion.
Second.
Motion is second, to move the request for proposals for engineering architectural services to our first meeting in September. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is unfinished business. This is a continued public hearing. The residential group to rezone 5.603 acres located on East Broad Caldwell Taints property from Central Business District to mixed-use development. And the ordinance that accompanies this public hearing is also on our agenda. This is a continuation of that public hearing that was started at our meeting, our last meeting in July. And then we had, as you all recall, two subsequent meetings that involved the applicant and the public. And that the, at the last meeting, we decided to convene the public hearing back here tonight to hear one more time from the applicant and from anybody from the public who would like to speak. So I would ask the applicant first to come forward and let us know if there are, if there are any changes, if the applicant will come forward and just state your name for the record, please. We heard from you last time, the amended application that you had brought to us.
Yes, sir. I was planning on going through those changes again. Ms. Jenkins wasn't at that last meeting, if that's acceptable.
Sure.
Do you have the slides? Look at that. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So I will, I will be brief, but I was just going to run through the present state of the projects, or proposed project. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, citizens of Noonan. I'm Kurt Alexander. I'm with TRG. And I'm here to make the presentation for the proposed district at Noonan Project. We have revised our proposal to match the requests and recommendations of the numerous citizens, businesses, and local organizations that have provided their meaningful input. This plan matches the LCI study, meets the future needs of the city per the Bleakley Advisory Housing Study, and embraces the historical roots that makes the city of Noonan such a special place. On the master concept plan, you'll notice the one-acre site across the street has been removed. Our revised site area is 5.6 acres. The proposed zoning is still MXD within the downtown district overlay. The total unit count has been revised from 348 units to 285 units. That's an 18% reduction. Unchanged, though, is the 5,600 square feet of adaptive reuse for the R.D. Cole Office Building, the 13,500 square feet of the adaptive reuse R.D. Cole Warehouse, and then we're still providing 11,000 square feet of amenity space, a parking deck, the private drive, and conditioned corridors, which would make this project like no other within the city limits. Total parking spaces are 503, which is one space per bedroom and 23% for guests, 458 spaces within the parking deck, and 45 spaces on the private drive. The revised makeup is 165 studios and one bedrooms with 165 spaces, or 58% of the units, and then 122 bedrooms, 42% of the units, 240 spaces. And this leaves a guested commercial total of 98 spaces. Cost to develop, the site remains the same. Purchase price will be around $4 million. Demolition environmental costs, there's still $2 million. The historical renovation is still an additional $5 million. Again, $11 million just to walk in the door with a clean slate on the site. That's very important to understand on this. It's a very high cost to entry. On the land use plan, what you'll notice here is that we have revised the Link Plan based on losing the parcel across the street. We propose bringing the Link down East Broad and onto the site. We show two potential paths across the site to Salbeady, and then we would take it down Salbeady towards downtown and stop at the property line. We would build the 10-foot-wide Link Trail that's proposed throughout Noonan. The other thing we would do is, since we already have to meet with CSX to deal with the drainage issue and the right-of-way issue that we have, because part of one of the buildings is actually on CSX property, is we would go ahead and negotiate a pedestrian easement, or pedestrian, excuse me, crossing on East Broad, so that would link safely with the extension of Link to downtown. The next page is just kind of our context shots, because we went back and reassessed our architecture. And then the next project shows the change, the main change on the architecture side is that we revised or modified the East Broad Street to three stories, as well as updated the architecture through the site. There were some concerns about massing, so we wanted to bring that building bound. It is the same height at this point as Salbeady, so you have three stories on each of the main roads, again, to better match the buildings in the area. We have also added additional detailing to the buildings to further tie in elements of the existing buildings in the downtown area. Parapet and cornice detailing, shade devices at the street level, mimicking opens in storefront. And then the elevation at the bottom of this slide shows the revised massing on East Broad. And then again, this is the comparative to Salbeady. It shows again, Salbeady was all three stories anyway, but this does show the updated architecture with the new, new items to mass the downtown area. The last thing I would just like to end with is, based on our updated proposal, the total revised cost will be approximately $58 million at this point. Our construction loan will be in the area of $35 million, and TRG will provide the remaining $23 million in equity with no outside services. This will, basically, this basically leads to a projected community buying power of about 15.1 million annually that this project would have to the benefit of the downtown area. In closing, we are committed to this opportunity. We believe in this project and are willing to make a large investment, because it is the right development for the city, the businesses, and the downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Alexander?
A quick question. On the last meeting, you had mentioned that the, if you go back to the.
Yes, sir.
On Broad or Salbeady.
Yeah.
That you were going to just go a flat-lined roof.
Yes.
And this still shows a varying height. Are you going back to the varying height?
Oh, no, 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 no. What we were showing before was actually a sloped or pitched roof, or a shingled roof, which again, what we've done now is Salbeady and East Broad will have a flat roof or a TPO roof. So it will mimic, again, the exact, most of the buildings in the downtown area do have flat roofs. Some of them do have slope roofs, but we've taken the slope roof out. What you're seeing there is just the variation of the parapets. And again, when you go through the downtown Noonan area, you do see variations in the parapets as the buildings in the surrounding areas, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Anyone? Any other questions? Thank you.
We've got some other people that would like to come up in support of the project.
If you'll come up and state your name for the record, please.
Gary Bernstein, 23 Perry Street, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, public, and staff. Just a couple of quick comments. Unfortunately, I missed the last two meetings. However, I did want to say that I'm looking at this revised compromise plan, and it looks about as good as you can get. I think most of it, I think addresses most of the criticisms of the property as it originally happened in the first meeting, number one. Number two is, I think it's going to be a welcome addition to downtown Noonan and provide the purchasing power and the people to frequent our businesses, which are continuing to grow in downtown Noonan and are required, as I mentioned last time. They're, you know, a robust, robust commercial viability in downtown Noonan is going to be important for maintaining the old buildings, increasingly aged buildings, that are going to require repair and maintenance. Lastly, and I think this is really important, is what do we really have to lose here? We have a horrible eyesore in the center of this beautiful town that is a dilapidated building with windows that fall to the sidewalk. And what we're going to do is environmental remediation and repair of existing buildings that no one else has volunteered or even, you know, proposed to do in the recent past. And so even if at some point there are some, you know, unused apartments here, and it doesn't, it isn't fully occupied in the first six months, nonetheless, we've enriched the city in ways that I think we'll all find immeasurably advantageous. So I would just echo not only my own opinions, but also some of the business owners in downtown Noonan with whom I've spoken, that they are very much in favor of this compromise and would be, like I said earlier, a welcome addition to downtown Noonan. Thank you very much.
Thank you. If someone else who wanted to speak, there's a few minutes left on the allotted time for the applicant. Okay, all right. Then if that's the case, we'll move into anyone who would like to speak in opposition. I would ask that those people come forward to try to refrain from repeating the same thing that we've heard several times now. So if you'll come forward at this time, that would be great, starting at 7:06.
My name is Katie Chapman. I speak on behalf of the Chapman family at 71 East Broad Street. My mom's not reading because she left her glasses at home. I would like to thank Mayor Brady, city council members, staff, and members of the community on both sides of the issue here tonight. Even if we disagree on this particular issue, I think we can all agree that Noonan is a wonderful place to live, raise our families, shop, work, and play. Our community is bound to grow, but we don't want to lose its identity. That's something many cities have never had. This has never been a judgment against apartments or those who live in them. It's about location, appropriateness, parking, and architectural design. Our merchants depend on us to shop and eat downtown, and we depend on you to protect our historic residential neighborhoods and our quality of life. You do that by making responsible decisions about zoning, density, and appropriateness. This is about protecting our historic districts, our neighborhoods, and the downtown for the long run. We have everything to lose in this project. I have personally spoken with countless businesses who oppose this project. This proposal is not compatible with the LCI or the Comprehensive Plan, which promises to protect historic districts, the small-town charm of our city, and our historic residential neighborhoods. This proposal also fails to meet the intent of mixed-use zoning, which would include retail and commercial on the ground floor, including the interior corridors of the buildings facing Andrews Street. The density of this project has not changed and was set a dangerous precedent. That's something that should not be ignored or taken lightly. This proposal was unanimously denied by planning and zoning. The overwhelming majority of residents oppose this and have shown up in large numbers to speak against it at each and every meeting. Nearly 1,700 members of our community have signed the petition opposing this and provided hundreds of comments. This all has to count for something. The signs were designed to be temporary. I'm sick of seeing them, and I'm sure we are all ready for them to go away as well. That was the point all along. These apartments would be anything but temporary. This is our chance to get this right and develop this property into something that benefits our community as a whole. This isn't it. Each of you have been entrusted with the responsibility of representing us, and we trust that you will do that tonight as you vote. This has been a long journey, but at the end of the day, we are neighbors and members of the same community. We are the city of Noonan. Mr. Alexander, I wish you success in building your apartments. Not here, no hard feelings. Thank you.
If you'll state your name for the record, please.
My name is Chuck Landrum. I live at 75 East Broad Street. And I do perhaps am going to say something that hadn't been said before. I'm currently a patrol sergeant with a major area police department. I would like to speak to the tactical difficulties involved in policing apartment complexes. Apartments accessed from interior hallways place officers in increased danger by eliminated visual contact with backup units. Elevators and stairways cause further delays and are inherently more dangerous for officers. This means that calls such as verbal disputes, domestics, trouble unknown, and even mundane calls like noise complaints require two officers, doubling the manpower required for officer safety. I've also served as sergeant over Special Operations Unit with primary responsibility over drug and prostitution stings. Primary tools for those type of operations are surveillance and undercover buys. Hallways eliminate the ability to perform surveillance, and they take a confidential informant out of the visual contact with on-scene officers, greatly increasing the danger to the person conducting the undercover buy, whose safety is responsible, is the responsibility of the city. I'm also a state-certified SWAT officer and counter sniper. I hold certifications in both of those. I've served approximately 100 search warrants, seven in one night. I've deployed approximately 30 times against barricaded gunmen as a counter sniper. Operations conducted in hallways are termed linear assaults and are the most difficult and dangerous operations. When bullets ricochet off walls, they typically travel six to eight inches off the wall, leaving officers nowhere to find cover and trapped in a hallway. This is what is called a fatal funnel. Hallways also eliminate. Hallways also eliminate highly effective tool of a counter sniper to enter, end potentially violent circumstances. There's simply no way to gain visual access. Now, many will say, this is Noonan, and those things don't happen here. I can tell you, 100 search warrant, over 100 surveillance operations, 50 undercover drug buys, 15 prostitution stings, 30 deployments against barricaded gunmen, all happened less than 30 miles away from here. It's coming. Let's don't make decisions that hasten that day. If you've never considered what I've just said, believe me, the criminals do. We must think about what these apartments will be in 10 and 20 years, when they've been sold two and three times, and the maintenance has regressed, and it becomes a simple business decision to lower the rent. And it changes the entire complexion of the folks that are here. What these gentlemen are going to build, I'm sure will look very nice, but let's think about down the road what we're going to have, and we're going to be locked into it. So I'd like to ask you all to vote no for it, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stan Topol. I've been a resident in this beautiful town for almost a quarter of a century. And I think what the guys have done have taken where they started and tried to make it look more like the city of Noonan. They haven't quite gotten there yet, but they're trying. I think that's a nice point. The horrible, horrible thing about what we're talking about is, if you've ever driven down the street with a train coming, and you have this traffic forever, then all of a sudden you now get into more traffic. The real key here, which they haven't addressed, make this whole thing, sit back, make it look like it was part of it here. Make it part of everything. Don't make it unique. It's kind of like when I told you the last time. You know, you don't walk into a good apartment into the kitchen first. No, I mean, I've never been in an apartment that, where you walked into a kitchen first. I think that's maybe the new trend, but that's not what we need in Noonan. In Noonan, we need something that's older or feels older. When I develop things at Saranby or at the St. Regis, everything we do is things that fit where you are. Read that sign. It's the city of homes. This needs to, this can do it. They just haven't quite gotten there yet. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, anyone else? If you'll come forward, state your name, please.
Hello, my name is Lily Goodson. I live on East Broad Street, four houses down from the railroad tracks. I'm turning 15 years old in October, and I will be getting my learner's permit. My parents are scared to let me start driving, just as any parent would, but the main cause of their worry is letting me back out of my own driveway, especially with the traffic from these new apartments. On East Broad Street alone, there are nine children under the age of 18 who are about to start driving. It's difficult for an experienced driver. Imagine us trying not to get T-boned by the additional traffic. Hundreds of extra cars on my road means hundreds of extra cars on the square. People will have to wait forever on the crosswalks, making it more dangerous than ever for Noonan's residents. Along with more traffic, there will have to be double the amount of parking spots per apartment to make any sense at all. Where will these extra cars go? They will park in the streets in the spaces where the shopkeepers, restaurant owners, and shoppers are supposed to be parking. People coming to downtown to eat and shop will think twice because they'll remember they can't park anywhere. They'll decide to go somewhere else. I can understand that no one likes to drive in and around Atlanta during rush hour. People start coming, people will start comparing our beautiful historic town to downtown Atlanta. We need to, we need to preserve that small-town charm that people know and love. If no one wants to go downtown because of the parking, they'll tell their friends, there's no parking, and they'll tell their friends and their friends, and people will slowly stop coming to the shops and restaurants. In conclusion, if you approve these apartments, you are putting the safety of your future generations at risk, and your decision could slowly destroy Noonan's economy by putting restaurants and shops out of business. People trust you to make the right decisions for our city. Think about that. Will these apartments really do more good than harm?
Thank you for being here. We appreciate that.
Good evening, council. My name is Shawla Weich. I occupy 24 Salbeady, corner of Salbeady and Thompson. And there was a lot that I wanted to say, but it was like mystifying. It was being pulled out of the air by some of the other speakers. And I had no idea that my years in hotel security were so hand-in-hand with what you just described, so thank you very much. My main thing I wanted to say in regards to the business people, I too have talked to people, but from a customer standpoint. I don't own a business downtown. But what I have discovered is, from the people that I've spoken with, a lot of them are against this issue. And it's almost like some people are taking the opportunity to say, if we build it, they will come. But you have to ask yourself, who is "they"? Thank you.
Okay, just a few minutes left. If you'll come forward, please. State your name for the record. Thank you.
I'm Eve Olson, and I live at 35 Ashley Creek Drive. I have been following this issue, and I just have one statement and question. If the community has come out in record numbers, and we can't as a community be effective in keeping these apartments out, then why would we care about community buying power? It seems like just a power play to buy the community.
Good evening, councilmen and citizens of Noonan. My name is Jocelyn Palmer. I live at 19 Alpine Drive, Noonan, Georgia. Finally, a long, hot summer is drawing to a merciful close, and hopefully this process is drawing to a close, too. At this juncture, no opinions will be swayed and no votes will be changed. I would like to recognize some of our citizens who've played a pivotal role in this process. Thank you to the Planning and Zoning Board. They correctly judged this proposed project as unsuitable for the MXD zoning designation and voted unanimously to deny. Thank you to the residents of both Coal Town and the Mill Villages. Without your steadfast opposition to this project and the exuberant use of yard signs, we wouldn't have been able to draw attention to and expose the deficiencies of this proposed project. Next, I want to recognize Keith and Lynn Chapman, and they are three amazing daughters. The Chapmans rose to the occasion and organized our city in opposition to this project. They spent untold hours circulating petitions, knocking on doors, distributing informational flyers, placing and updating yard signs, knocking on yet more doors, and placing even more yard signs. They urged the citizenry to write, email, and to call their elected representatives. They spurred our citizenry to attend multiple meetings to make our voices heard. I know that our city council and staff were definitely inundated with feedback at levels heretofore unseen. The Chapmans did not discriminate between rich or poor, young or old, black or white. They viewed everyone as having a stake in the future of the development of our city. We owe a great thanks to this family. The city council received an unexpected gift from this process, input. The meeting for citizen input fully demonstrated the future that our fellow citizens envisioned. Please use this input to formulate new public-private partnerships within our community to thoughtfully and sensitively develop this parcel for the common good. Our fair city is blessed with imaginative and talented people possessing great wisdom and common sense. Funds for additional remediation are available from the state of Georgia and the federal government. We have a surplus of funds in the city's accounts. I urge our city leaders to use some of these excess funds to join with our business community to develop this parcel into the centerpiece of this city's next century of development with creative ideas and public-private partnership and a positive attitude towards good growth and sensitive development, just about anything is possible. In closing, I urge each of you to vote in opposition to this proposed zoning change and the development proposal. Together, we can do so much better.
Her last word hit the 15-minute mark. Mr. Alexander, you had seven minutes left out of your 15. If you'll come forward and state your name for the record, Ms. Griffiths.
Good evening, Melissa Griffiths, 32 South Court Square, Noonan, Georgia, 30263. On behalf of the residential group, we'd like to thank the mayor and staff and council members, all the citizens that have shown up. There have been many comments. We've had many meetings outside of the work sessions as well. We believe the project tonight that's being presented is one that has taken into account citizen input, additional staff input, and input from the mayor and council yourselves. I did want to note that we did withdraw the variance requests because there's not a need since the removal of the one-acre proposal has been removed. I did also want to address that the traffic study that was performed by Vern Wilburn, who again is a third party, shows that there's less traffic with an MXD proposal than there is as it's currently zoned with the CBD zoning. I know that you all have received numerous letters, emails, calls from people that are in support that aren't always able to come to meetings. We've had numerous other people come and speak on our behalf at other meetings, and we didn't want to duplicate that tonight. I know that the Noonan Cowida Chamber Board of Directors has also sent a letter in support, and I just want to take two seconds for two sentences that they included. They believe the conceptual construction design fits well into our beautiful downtown area. The premium rent will attract high-income residents into downtown, which will bring recurring revenue and investment into our local economy. These considerations represent long-lasting positive potential effects of the project. We would ask you to vote in favor of it, and Mr. Alexander has a few closing remarks. Thank you.
I will be brief. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you for allowing us to make this proposal. We've enjoyed the opportunity to work with all of you on this project and hearing your input. TRG as a group is truly passionate about what we do and how we do it. Ask anyone in the industry. We have one of the strongest reputations in the marketplace. Based on our experience and TRG's track record, this is the right project for the site. It will increase property taxes, it'll provide greater support for the local businesses, and raise the property values in the area. Mayor, council members, you've toured the site. I mean, you all have been out there. You know the state that it's in. You've read the studies, you've attended the conferences. Our proposed project is a model for smart growth, which goes above and beyond by adapt reusing the two buildings on site with the greatest historical significance. We would obviously like a positive vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. Okay, any questions from council, anyone? Okay, I am going to close this month-long public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. And once again, on behalf of the council and myself, I'd like to thank everybody who was involved in this, in this process and participated in this process. You know, it's a rare occasion to have an opportunity to help shape the redevelopment of a parcel of the size and location and the proximity to a downtown area that we have in Caldwell-Tanks. That process actually started not with the application being presented to the city, but years ago, when the city drafted its comprehensive land use plan and was awarded, also awarded a grant for the right, the writing of the Livable Cities, Livable Communities Initiative. And we take those two documents, and we use them to make our zoning decisions. During the most recent rewrite of our zoning ordinance, the city added a mixed-use classification that encouraged a residential component along with an appropriate mix of retail and office and restaurants, thereby creating a livable space that provides the opportunity of employment and amenities that are enjoyed in everyday life. I believe that the Caldwell-Tanks site itself lends itself to this zoning classification, as many of you feel the same way. But only the appropriate ratio of all the components need to be achieved in order to approve that classification. I do not believe that this application achieves that goal. The applicant's company is an apartment developer, and there's nothing wrong with that. Y'all do a great job developing apartments. But you're not a mixed-use developer. And as such, their business model does not include the ability to create the commercial and office space in the ratio to residential that is critical to comply with the city's vision of this site as depicted in the Livable Communities Initiative and our comprehensive plan. I believe that there is a better plan for Caldwell-Tanks site, one that is truly mixed use, that supports the adjacent residential, the historic residential neighborhood, adheres to the architectural styles of Noonan, and most importantly enhances our downtown. The inclusion of these elements in a well-thought-out, mixed-use plan will achieve the positive multigenerational goal that is possible at Caldwell-Tanks site. And I believe there's more work to do. If there are other members of the council who would like to come in, I would welcome those comments. If not, I'll entertain a motion on the issue.
I do have a comment.
Yes.
I agree with everything you just said, but I want people to understand. But I want you to understand that the residential piece in there was never classified as ownership only. I know that there's been a lot of consternation in our community about the apartments being part of this, and I want to make it very clear that I never had a problem with apartments. It was always the density. It's just too many. So with that, I will make a motion to deny.
Well, under what conditions?
That it does not fit what we are looking for in this project.
I'd like to amend the motion, if I might. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Boz.
Yes, I, I think as far as an explanation, as far as the denial goes, that we need to deny as originally submitted and amended based on the scale, the density, and mix of proposed uses not being consistent with the city's adopted comprehensive plan and Livable Centers Initiative report.
Second. Will you accept that?
I will accept that amendment.
Is that a second?
Second.
For the amended motion? Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing on 6 Glen Street. We've got more business to attend to. If you, if you would like to leave, if you'll do so quietly, we would appreciate that very much. We've got more agenda to take care of. Thank you. Thank you for your participation. The next is a public hearing on 6 Glen Street, a resolution to repair or demolish. Mr. Murray.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council.
Please, we've got more business to attend to. Thank you.
We have five agenda items. I think we can get through these pretty quickly. The first one is 6 Glen Street. This property was purchased by a developer in 2018, and they pulled permits, did a little bit of work, but never really, it never really got off the ground. It was foreclosed and purchased in April. This and a sister property, 8 Glen Street, by a Ticken-Olem LP. I talked to one of their representatives today. They are now reselling the property, and they're supposed to close on this, on Friday. So I would like to maybe see if we can set a reasonable resolution deadline to allow the new owner to have the chance to, to repair the property.
Okay, this is a public hearing on 6 Glen Street. Is anyone here that would like to speak to the issue, the public hearing on 6 Glen Street? Seeing no one come forward on the public hearing on 6 Glen Street, Mr. Murray, while I appreciate your, your desire to give them some time to do that, I don't share your opinion. I want to give them 30 days in order to come in here, and I want, I want to do that in order to pressure them to come in and give you, give us a plan to do that. I don't, so that's my recommendation, counsel.
I make a motion to give 30 days.
There's certain questions you still need to ask.
Was that not in the report? Was that not in your report? The value of the...
But for the record.
Okay. Does the value of the property exceed the, the cost? Does the value of the property exceed the, the cost for...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, uh, no, it does not.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have a motion for a 30-day resolution on repair and demolish. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next is a public hearing on 8 Glen Street. This is continued to 9/24 due to recent change in ownership. So, we'll continue this until nine, the public hearing until 9/24/19.
You need a motion to set the public hearing for that.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, and is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. We set the public hearing date for 9/24/19 on 8 Glen Street. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. The next is a public hearing on 100 Spraberry Road. This is a resolution to repair or demolish. Mr. Murray?
Yes. Yeah, this property was purchased again approximately two years ago. The owner pulled permits, started some work, and then the project just stopped and it's set with the, the upper pictures with the tarps, the exposed sides for probably close to a year, year and a half, two years, that's set in that condition. We were getting multiple complaints. We initiated the process to, to come before, for the repair or demolish process, come before council. Since that time, the owner, who I believe is supposed to be here tonight, uh, great, he has gotten busy with the, with the project. He's done a considerable amount of work over the last four or five weeks and the project is, is well on its way to, to becoming habitable and, and keeping with our codes in the, in the city. And I would like to ask the owner if he would come up and maybe explain to the council what your plans are for the project and how much time you think you might need to, to complete it.
This is a public hearing on 100 Spraberry Road. If you'll come forward, please. I just, I, I want to tell you, I go by that house about six or seven times a week. You've done a great job. I'd like you to tell us how much more time you need to get it finished.
We're about 45 days out from how, how we want it to look.
Forty-five days?
Maximum of 45 days, between 30 and 45.
I'd like, based on that, I'd like to close the public hearing at this time and ask for the council to give this gentleman 60 days to complete his project.
Second.
Motion is second. We adopt a 60-day based on the amount of work that he's done. It's, it's really incredible, the transformation of that house.
Thank you, sir.
In the last 30, 30, 45 days.
Yes, sir.
So, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is 15 Elm Street. This is a continue, the resolution to repair or demolish. Mr. Murray?
Yes, sir. This, this was a continue from, well, from the last two months. This property, there was an, the issue with the, the executor of the, the estate. They had, you know, families hired an attorney to work through that process and the executor was replaced. And I believe Mr. Mike Sumner's, you hear, great. He, he is here tonight to, to inform the council as the new executor of the plans for the property and what he sees in the timeframes that he'll need to complete this project.
Mr. Sumner?
Thank you. On 15...
If you'll state your name for the record, please.
I'm sorry, Mike Sumner, 87 LaGrange Street.
Thanks, sir.
This one at 15 Elm Street is going to be a complete tear-down. I don't think there's any chance to rehabilitate this particular house. There is currently no one in the house, so I don't have to worry about possessing anyone. I just became the successor administrator of the estate on August the 7th. And last week, I got some police to go over there and go through the house with me. So, I would think maybe 30, 45 days ought to be able to get a contractor in there to just bulldoze and move the, all of the rubbish out of the house and off the property.
Is there a motion for 45? Any questions of Mr. Sumner? Is there a motion for 45 days?
Second.
Motion is second for 45 days on 15 Elm Street. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Sumner. Appreciate that. 180 West Washington, owner requests extension.
Yes, sir. 180 West Washington Street, that property resolution deadline, they had 180-day deadline. That is coming up September 7th. I talked to the owner last week. He does, he tells me he wants an extension. Unfortunately, he did not get me that. I asked him to have me that in writing by last week and he was not able to do that or did not do that. There was, there has, there was some work done earlier in the year, some demolition work. They basically gutted the property, but as it sits now, it's just four, it's just a shell. It's four walls, there's no roof. And what he's telling me, there were some liens on the property that he's trying to work through that is causing the delay. And, and so he has not started construction on it. So, it's, it's basically sitting as a shell right now. And he, he did not respond to me for a, as a, for a request for an extension, so.
Is he intending to continue the demolition? Or is he going to...
He would, no, he, he tells me that demolition is complete and that he's, he wants to start rebuilding the house, but he, he just, the work, he just, the work hasn't started.
Mr. Shum?
I was going to say, let's give him a short period of time to come in and give us a plan, but to me, there's no progress to speak of other than cleaning it out. I mean, it looks...
There hasn't, there hasn't been any progress in several months, no.
But you did give him notice that he could be here tonight, correct?
Yes.
So, what is the deadline of what he has now?
The September 7th is when the resolution deadline, resolution deadline expires.
Well, then, I would suggest a 30-day extension in order for him to come in. Is there a motion? Is there a motion?
Yes, that's fine.
Second. 30-day extension of 180 West Washington. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Murray.
Thank you.
The next on the item under visitors, Tracy Lewis Delta, Tracy Lewis of the Delta Sigma Theta Sorority, Inc., requests to host a 5K fundraiser in the city of Newnan on March 28, 2020 for scholarships for students of Troop in Coweta County. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve the request as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next is the Summer Grove HOA requests to post signs and banners at their entrances at Shenandoah, East Lake, and Lower Fayetteville and East Newnan, East Lake on Mary Freeman on September the 5th through the 7th for the neighborhood yard sale and November the 12th for military heroes.
So moved.
Second.
Change that, November 9th through the 12th. I have a motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. The next is a request of the athletic director at Newnan High School to hold the Newnan High School Homecoming Parade on Thursday, October the 10th, 2019, beginning at 5:30, followed by the pepper. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. That ends our regular agenda for the evening. We do have a, a need for an executive session. Is anyone, is there, is anyone here who has come with an off-agenda item for the council to consider this evening? If you'll turn off that cell phone. Who's got that? Please turn it off. Or leave the room, one of the two. Thank you. Okay. I, I think that's a good way to end the meeting. I'm going to ask Mayor Pro Tim Cynthia Jenkins to take it in, into executive session for real estate.
I move that we now enter into closed session as allowed by official code of Georgia 50-14-4 pursuant to advice by the city attorney for the purpose of discussing real estate and that we in open session adopt a resolution authorizing or directing the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with the official code of Georgia 50-14-4 and that this body ratify the actions of the council taken in closed session and confirm that the subject matters of the closed session were within exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Second.
Motion is second. We go into executive session, discuss real estate. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here. We're in the executive session.